Good evening and welcome to the closed session of our City Council meeting for Solvang. We're starting the meeting at 5:32. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Claudia Rona.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Elizabeth Aruna.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Everybody please stand up. Hold your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start off if there's any public comments to our closed session and that specific item. Seeing none, we will close it to public comments. And Madam Secretary, would you read that for us? Ma'am Clerk, I'm sorry. To the, read that into the record?
Closed session today. We're recessing item 2A, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code 54956.8b, property 790 Ryeb Road, APN 137132014. Agency negotiator Randy Murphy, city manager, negotiating parties, Mark Glasby Verizon Wireless, under negotiation, both price and terms. Item number 2B, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.91. Name of case, San Inez Valley Residents Association v. City of Solvang at All, case number 25CB01519. Item number 2C, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.92, one potential case.
Thank you very much. We will adjourn to closed session.
Okay. Just give me a second here. Okay. We are back from closed session. Thank you very much. And, um, Madam Attorney, would you give us any reportable action, please?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. There is no reportable action coming out of either, any of the closed sessions this evening. There was direction given to staff on all three items. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we are now closing our closed session. And, uh, we will begin our, um, regular session in one minute. Take a, take a breath.
One whole minute.
One whole minute. Okay. Okay. tenth, twenty twenty-five. We begin our meeting at six-thirty, and, uh, we'll start with roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante.
Here.
Mayor Potem Claudia Rona.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Elizabeth the Rona.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Infante, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Absolutely. Do you stand with your hand over your heart?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, just a little housekeeping. I appreciate if everybody would turn their phones to silent and, um, or are off. That's an option, too. And, uh, we'll get rolling here. We have one, um, proclamation here. Let me get to that part of it. This is a City of Solvang proclamation to VFW Post seventy-one thirty-nine. Whereas September twenty-ninth marked a hundred and twenty-six years since the thirteen Spanish-American War veterans gathered in a small tailor shop in Columbus, Ohio, to discuss how they could assist their fellow veterans and the dependents of their fallen comrades founding the Veterans of Foreign Wars. And whereas Solvang VFW Post seventy-one thirty-nine was founded on May eleventh, nineteen forty-six, to honor and serve our local veterans, this year the post celebrated its seventy-ninth anniversary. And whereas the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post seventy-one thirty-nine is dedicated to serving veterans and their families, fostering patriotism, and supporting our community. And whereas we recognize the sacrifices made by veterans and their families, ensuring that their contributions to our nation are honored and remembered. And whereas VFW Post seventy-one thirty-nine is essential to promote awareness of veterans' issues, providing support and advocacy for their needs in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor David Brown, along with the City Council of City of, uh, of Solvang, California, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, as honor our VFW Post seventy-one thirty-nine on Veterans Day, and encourage all peoples in the city to recognize and honor the contributions of our veterans and their families to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights. In witness thereof, I have unto set my hand and have caused the official seal of the City of Solvang, California, to be affixed this tenth day of November, twenty twenty-five. Is anyone here from the VFW Post, uh, would like to receive this? Okay, I will be, I will be announcing this again tomorrow at the Veterans Day Celebration at the Veterans Building here in Solvang. It's, you can always remember the day and time. It's always eleven-eleven at eleven. So, um, it's a, it's, we'll celebrate them at that, uh, ceremony tomorrow. Uh, we have no, um, presentations, so we'll go to public communications. I have one, um, by, uh, Shar Gutz.
It's different being on this side. Um, my name is Charlene Gutz, and I live at six-nine-nine Rancho Alasol Drive in Solvang. My husband and I are proud residents of Solvang. I also own and operate a vintage business here, and I'm honored to serve as a member of the Design Review Committee. Over the past few years, I've had the privilege of hosting the Flying Miss Daisy Vintage Market on the Mission Santa Inez grounds. These events bring together residents, visitors, and small business owners from all over California, and they've truly become something special in our community. Each market not only celebrates creativity and craftsmanship, it also supports Solvang's local commute, uh, economy. Visitors stay in our hotels, dine in our restaurants, and shop in our stores, bringing meaningful revenue and visibility to our city. In addition to that, I personally invest four thousand dollars in marketing for each event, which draws several thousand visitors to Solvang every time. These guests just don't attend the market, they explore and stay and spend money throughout our community, directly supporting local businesses and tourism. Now, as most of you know, the Mission Santa Inez is privately owned property. Like any other private business church or institution, it deserves to be treated as such. Yet at present, the Community Development Department is applying restrictions and oversight that go beyond what's required of our other privately owned properties, especially the especially those that host community-focused events. Let me give you an example. The Alisol Ranch Resort, which is also privately owned, hosts fundraisers, weddings, and artisan markets throughout the year. Those events proceed without direct city management or interference, and that's exactly how it should be. The mission should be treated with that same level of fairness and respect. The Mission San Ynez has long been a cornerstone of Solvang spiritually, historically, and culturally. It should not be singled out simply because it opens its doors to the community for beloved events like the Flying Miss Daisy Vintage Market, the Fourth of July Celebration, or the annual Christmas Tree Burn. These gatherings bring us together and attract visitors who in turn help our entire town thrive. As Scott Evans, promoter of Solvang's Fourth of July event, stated, quote, "I am in favor of restoring the original land use designation for Mission San Ynez, so the city no longer has jurisdiction over events held on Mission property. This would make it much easier for us and for other community partners to coordinate directly with the mission and continue hosting well-organized, successful events there." By restoring the mission's land use designation to its original intended status as private property, the city would ensure fairness, consistency, and clarity in how private properties are governed. It would also help prevent future confusion, delays, and financial burdens, both for the mission and for community partners who work hard to make Solvang such a vibrant, welcoming place. In closing, I respectfully ask the council to view this request not just as a procedural matter, but as an issue of fairness and respect for private property rights. Let's allow the Mission San Ynez, like every other property, private-owned property in Solvang, to operate with the same independence, dignity, and support. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers, uh, or anyone online? No? Okay. Well, then we will, uh, thank you again. Uh, we'll close it to public communications and move to item four, the City Manager's Report and Advance Calendar.
Yes, thank you. So I have several, uh, things to report. First of all, I wanted to remind everybody that the Community Cleanup Day is this coming Saturday, the 15th, uh, from 8:00 AM to noon in Parking Lot 5. Um, please refer to the information provided online. And I believe this was mailed to the homes as well about how to access and be respectful of the neighbors adjacent to the area, not blocking their driveways and things. Um, another item happening on Saturday is Turkey Bingo at Veterans Hall from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Uh, there's information available on our website. I believe that the, uh, cards for adults are $10 and kids are $5 or something like that. I know extra cards are $5. Um, and that's a whole lot of fun. You can win a free turkey. Well, not free, you gotta pay for the bingo cards, but that's what you're playing for. Um, and then on November 27th, the Recreation Department is sponsoring a turkey trot out at Sunny Field. It's about a 5K. It's not exactly that distance, but it's pretty close. And it starts at 10:00 AM on Thanksgiving morning. Um, wanted to remind the community, and I'll remind them again at our next meeting, there is a, um, unmet transit needs meeting going to be held in Buellton from 4:00 to 6:00 PM on December 3rd at the Buellton Chamber, Council Chambers. Um, and I don't have the address right here, but it's available online. Uh, if you have any awareness of unmet transit needs, like the bus to stop or whatever at a certain place, and that's the place to go and share that information with them. Uh, Agency Grant Funding Deadline for, uh, for the City of Solvang. We are going to be moving things up about a month. So we're starting, we will be accepting applications from, in December through the end of January. Uh, the applications will be available online, uh, once the application, the period begins. We're trying to get the budget done a little bit sooner this year, so we're starting everything a few weeks earlier. So again, advising the community that grant funding, the city's grant funding program application is starting earlier. We will also have the, uh, orientation meetings, two of them like we did last year. That seemed to help. So, uh, making that information available. And, uh, just by way of reminder, there's only two council meetings left this year. Uh, we have one in two weeks, and then two weeks after that, the week of Christmas, we are not having a meeting. Uh, upcoming agenda items, uh, I'm gonna have Joanne Plummer, uh, from the City of Galita, come in and give us an update on the library at the next meeting. We're gonna have a discussion about the urban growth boundary at the next council meeting. Also have a discussion about the San Ynez River, uh, the River Trail. That has been about an alignment and some discussion with council. On December 8th, we will be having a discussion, uh, bringing an item forward about this, updating the sign ordinance. So a lot of good stuff coming up. And the last thing I want to mention, I received a phone call today from a resident on, um, Freedensport Canyon about a deer that got hit and had to be put down by one of her sheriff's deputies and remind people about the speed on there. It is posted at 25 miles an hour. Um, she asked us to put speed bumps, and that's the usual thought of how you resolve speeding, but it's not the most efficient way. Obviously, the biggest deter would be better enforcement. So I'm gonna be talking to the sheriff. But I also want to let the community know that we are in the process of, of doing a, a design of that corridor or investigating, possibly making it a one-way street. And the reason for that is it's been long discussed about putting pedestrian pathway through there. But the, um, the width is not adequate. So if we're gonna do that, it's gonna cost a lot of money to do retaining walls and structures and other things. So it was suggested that we do it as a one-way, and then there would be plenty of room for pedestrian bicycle traffic. So that's not decided yet. That, I'm just saying, we're doing, and we're doing the, the legwork right now. The investigatory work to help determine what the best solution is. But for those of, uh, of, you know, residents that live in that corridor, uh, we are working on a solution. And for those of you that drive that corridor, please obey the speed limit. And that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you very much. Um, any questions for the City Manager? Okay. Um, that being said, we'll move on to item five, Expartee, um, Reports. Um, who, anybody have any they'd like to share? Ms. Smith?
Go ahead. Um, pretty quick. Um, I, via Zoom, I attended the California Statewide Insurance Town Hall that was held on the, um, 28th of October. Just information about how insurance is working in California and the changes they're making. Um, so it was very enlightening. Um, I can't say I attended, but I catered, um, Friends of the Library event at the California Nature Museum on the 5th of, of, um, November, which was wonderful. They had a, a young, um, novelist there, um, who was sort of showcasing one of his first in a trility called The Five Wishes of Mr. McMurray, Mr. Murray McBride. His name is Joe Siple. He is, um, a sports, he was a former sportscaster. And so I just started reading the book the other night, and I can't wait to get home to read it tonight. So that's about it.
Thank you. Others?
I have some expartee and, and a request. Um, so a couple of things. I participated in an interview in the KEIT, uh, news entity on the City Hall relocation. So I did have some interaction with the press, along with a few others. And I, uh, attended this week the California Commission Public Hearing, uh, sorry, California Coastal Commission Public Hearing for the Extension of the Diablo Canyon Power Plant Nuclear License. So I represented the City of Solvang with public statement and a, a elected official statement in support of our proclamation that we made a few weeks ago. Um, the outcome of the hearing is TBD. Uh, they delayed a decision and are looking for, um, I think, a few more conditions before the approval is, um, extended. Uh, I also wanted to, um, just disclose an expartee on Agenda Item 8A for tonight. I did have a conversation before I knew that the San Ynez Aquatics, uh, Foundation was gonna come back onto our agenda. I, I reached out to the Mayor of Buellton and spoke to him about his, their pledge and their challenge to us. So I did have a conversation with, uh, Mayor Silver, Silva, in advance of, um, tonight's meeting. But I'll disclose those comments, um, later in the, in the meeting. I did have a request because I think in reaction to some public comment, I think it's important that we, um, do reconsider, um, some zoning changes that we made as part of our housing element, uh, effort several months ago. And I would just suggest that we made some of those changes not in, in trying to be expedient and with a high focus on housing, perhaps we didn't do diligence on some other implications that we had on zoning, uh, decisions for the mission in particular, which is private land, which we took different zoning, uh, status over the mission as a result of that, those changes. So I think we should revisit that and perhaps even revisit, uh, a couple of the changes that we made on our, uh, business license and certificate, uh, conditions. We've heard from a couple of folks who are small, very small boutique or even seasonal businesses that either can't make the fees or there's confusion around who's, who is really required to submit for those business, um, certi- uh, certifications. I would rather make sure that we have very clear rules and we are open and encouraging these smaller types of businesses rather than see them go elsewhere in the valley, um, to set up shop. Those are my two requests.
Thank you. Mr. Infante?
Yeah, just a couple. Uh, first off, I did also attend, uh, online the Coastal Commission Hearing on the Nuclear Power Plant. Unfortunately, I couldn't speak. I was having technical difficulties and it just, I, anyway. But I did attend and listen to those for four hours or so. Um, also, I'm reading that same book. It's really good. It's hilarious. Uh, I attended the Friends of the Library, uh, session last week and, uh, talked to some of them about some of the events that are coming up for the library. Got that back to, uh, our, uh, staff here so that it would be noted on the, uh, on the website. Um, I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I've got a couple of things I'd like to mention. On the 27th, I was a featured speaker at the Men's Forum at the, uh, at the wonderful Chomps, uh, Restaurant here in town. Um, shared with them what's, uh, what's transpired, you know, uh, among the city and, and answer questions of, uh, of theirs. Um, I was at a, on the 28th, there was a Small Business Forward, uh, event at Quark, um, that actually Craft House, uh, for Econ Alliance. And, uh, they had, um, that was sponsored by, um, Econ Alliance and Verizon, the primary sponsors. And, uh, so it was for, meant for small business, and I provided, uh, opening remarks and greetings to everybody that was there on behalf of the city. And then, um, I was, uh, at the Solvang School, um, fundraiser at Vega Vineyards on the 1st, um, where they auctioned off Mayor for a day that we've donated, uh, in, in perpetuity, it seems like. But, uh, so we'll have a, a youngster, um, later, later in the year for, uh, Mayor of the Day, pound the gavel and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and, and, uh, enjoy front row seats at the, uh, at the, uh, tree lighting. So it was, it was fun and, uh, a, a great group of, uh, people that, and, uh, volunteers for the school. It's good to see that. Um, I, too, was on the Coastal Commission Meeting by Zoom and, um, advocated for extended license for Diablo Canyon Power Plant, um, by the city and, uh, and individually. Um, so that was that. And then, um, I'm gonna agree with my colleague here about the, uh, revisit some of the, uh, zoning changes that were made. I think that would be worthwhile, put on the calendar in the future. And, um, what was the other thing you said? Was it?
Business licenses.
Business license, yes. I, I, too, think that the fewer barriers to entry that we have for small business, uh, the better we'll be for it. Um, those are, those are endeavors and economics that we want within our city. So, um, I, I would agree with that, too. Um, do you have anything you'd like to add or, okay?
Not at this side.
There's a, I, good for you. Um, she's anxious to catch a plane tomorrow. That's okay. Um, that being said, we're gonna move on to item number six, Consent Items. And, um, would you read that to the record, please?
Consent is for routine administrative city matters and is approved with one motion. These items are discussed only on request of council members. Members of the public were afforded an opportunity to speak during the public communications portion of this agenda.
Thank you very much. Um, anybody like to pull anything or make a motion to approve the, uh, consent calendar as it is?
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar as is.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve this consent calendar, consent items and item six. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Claudia Rona.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We have no, uh, public hearing issues or concerns or on the calendar on the agenda, so we'll move to discussion items. Uh, item 8A. Would you read that into the report, please?
Consideration of Enhancing City Contribution to San Ynez Valley Aquatic Foundation Pool Project.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Um, earlier this year, the council approved Resolution 251281 to express support for San Ynez Valley Community Aquatic Foundation effort to provide a new and improved aquatic facility at San Ynez High School Campus. And the support was further in evidence when the council adopted the current fiscal year's city budget and committed $450,000 of Measure U funds upon project groundbreaking, along with a few other conditions. The Su- City of Buellton recently matched Solvang's pledge of $450,000 and challenged us to contribute more so that they could increase their contribution to, again, match ours. There were, I was at the meeting, there was a back-and-forth conversation among that council, and ultimately they settled on $50,000 increase to make the combined city contribution between the two cities of a million dollars. So, um, because of that challenge, I committed to that council. I said, "I can't commit to an increase, but I can't commit to taking it before my council." So here I am. Um, so the, the request that, before you tonight, is to, um, give, provide direction regarding both the amount and the timing of any additional contributions to the project. It is important to note that both cities' financial participation is noticed by the entire community and encourages others to contribute to the cause. And that's my report, and I am available to answer questions.
Thank you. Besides Buellton, what other, uh, community leadership or, um, philanthropic endeavors have we heard of?
So the, the, of public agencies, the county has committed $240,000 of development funds or fees to the project. Uh, the Chumash, I've heard two different numbers, either 100 or 150,000 they've contributed in the past. Um, and this is also part of, the idea is by the cities contributing a half a million dollars each that the, um, count, the, the county and the tribe would follow suit. But there's no, there's no, um, commitment from them, but we're hoping to encourage them to do so.
Randy, they didn't even pledge like we pledged, because it's a form of a commitment without releasing dollars.
Right.
Okay. So no one else has pledged?
I'm sorry?
No one else has pledged?
Well, I mean, not, remember, a number of the community has.
Yes.
I mean, they have about a third of the money they need. There are four and a half roughly million dollars raised so far.
The tribe's status is...
The tribe's status, they've actually contributed money back in the early days of 100 or 150,000. Like I said, I've heard both numbers. I don't know for sure.
Have you had any conversation or direction with our Measure U?
I had, I had an email conversation with Jeff Urema, who's the Chair of the Committee. Uh, he did not express any, he said it was consistent with the, with the Committee's, um, recommendation about it. So he did not object.
Well, Randy, they technically have earmarked and made recommend-
Well, Randy, they technically have earmarked and made recommendations for all of the dollars that they have in budget, correct?
Not 100%, no.
What's remaining?
There was some that was unspent.
Do you know how much?
From the current year. I don't remember. Wendy's online, can, Wendy, do you know? It seems to me it was 200,000 or 300,000 at least. Plus, I know our revenue is higher than what we had anticipated. Wendy?
Can she repeat her question?
Wendy, thanks for chiming in. Do you recall if Measure U through the 2026 budget cycle, did they earmark all of their available budget, or make a recommendation for all of it, or is there any surplus remaining?
There's surplus remaining.
Do you know how much?
No.
Okay.
You give me a minute, I can look.
Okay, yeah. Take your time.
And, and, and the intent here would be, and the recommended motion is to make the adjustment, I mean, get the pledge tonight, but not actually do any budgetary work until we do the mid-year budget adjustment, at which time it would be clear that there would be adequate funding. But there is adequate funding, I know we didn't spend it all, and we didn't allocate it all, rather.
I just remember, sorry, Randy, I don't want to contradict you, I remember that we came back and we had like a, we really targeted the full budget this year, almost to where we were spending everything except about $5,000. That's what I recall from this year's budget exercise.
The general fund budget was, I think, somewhere in the $30,000 to $50,000 surplus, but the Measure U budget was not.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to public comment, then. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this, sure, please come up to the microphone, share with us your, your, your name and position.
Good evening, Mayor Brown and councilmembers. I'm Lisa Palmer with the Community Aquatics Foundation. I just wanted to thank the council for their earlier commitment, and to thank Randy for his continued involvement and advocacy of the project. You know, we, when Buellton City Council met last month and started having a conversation about how they could potentially get both cities to commit the million, you know, that was, that was organic on their end, so we're of course grateful for the momentum and the commitment of both cities. I just wanted to address your question about the Chumash. We are in conversations with them about increasing their participation, and figuring out what that will look like, so that's in progress. Since the Buellton commitment, we've had two more $50,000 grants come in. It is, it is helpful, as you can imagine, with foundations and individuals who are looking at making pledges or investments, to see a substantial commitment to the cities and the county who all, you know, whose residents will benefit from, from the facility. So, anyway, with that, I will leave you to do your fiscal due diligence. Of course, we would love the support. You know, just a reminder, too, of the guidelines and criteria, the guardrails, if you were, that were put on the initial, you know, it's not until construction begins, it has a sunset in 2028 if nothing's happened, so, and I think those are all very reasonable caveats, if you all are conditioned, so, anyway, thank you, and if you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there anybody on Zoom, or anybody else in the room that would like to chime in on this? Okay, I will then close it to public comment, and get them back to the dais for further discussion. Any questions, or thoughts, or?
Let's do it.
Best to...
I have some thoughts. I did, as I mentioned earlier, I spoke to the Mayor Buellton, David Silva, before, but just in reaction to what was the, I think it was in News Hawk, or I can't remember the press, but, I think, I appreciate the idea that, to sort of up the ante, if you will, with a challenge. I just want to, I'm glad Lisa's here, because I wanted to make sure that the desired impact of our pledge was actually working, that we, in combination, Solvang and Buellton were actually spurring on more donations, and other entities who have the means and would support, would benefit from the aquatics program and pool, would step up and step in. Buellton's a little bit late, let's be honest, you know, we did this in June, I think, so, but I just wonder if there's a timeframe associated with their challenge? Because I feel like, you know, essentially, nothing's changed, except that Buellton's kind of thrown down a, you know, can we do, do more? I also feel like we need to get through a couple of seasonal retail, you know, windows of time to see if we're gonna come in as predicted on our budget from a revenue perspective, and don't come up short if we don't have a good holiday, and we don't have a good spring, or it rains. So I'm of the mindset to, you know, look, we have time, we have till 2028, and would like to see some more big entities share in the big numbers. I'm also slightly concerned about pledging more than what we have pledged to the senior center. So while I think that if we were not to do something tonight, I don't want it to be misinterpreted as lack of support, we are enthusiastically supporting. I don't see a compelling reason to put money, more money now. I think we can do that more leisurely as we go through this year's budget, and even into '26 and '27.
I'm not sure that I would agree, since it's not a budget for this year, or even next year necessarily. If they don't come up with the money, it all, nothing happens. So it is a pledge to support them, and if it comes to that, we'll put the money up, but it's not something we need to worry about for the next year or so, anyway. So I would move that we approve the $50,000...
Challenge.
Challenge.
Well, if we do that, we should require Buellton meets this challenge as well. They didn't put up their 50K, did they? Did they put up half a million, or 450?
No, they pledged 450, but, and definitely said that they would increase it if we did.
I've stated my opinion.
There's a motion on the floor, if anybody wants to second that.
I'll second it.
And I would ask to clarify, you want the same guardrails that we put on it before, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. Same thing we've got on the 450.
Do you want an answer before we vote on where the money comes from? Because we only have a 30,000, taking the lower number, surplus on the budget.
General fund surplus, but the Measure U money is not included in that.
Wendy's right here.
Yeah, so the Measure U for '25-'26, we projected that the revenue would be 2,050,000, expenses was 3,129,000, with a projected fund balance at the end of the year of 420,000.
It makes me feel bitter about it.
So there's a motion and a second, right?
It's been moved and seconded, if there's no other discussion, I'll ask for the roll call.
Councilmember Infante?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Claudia Rona?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona?
No.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's move to Item 8B.
First reading for ordinance for introduction, Ordinance 250384, modifying terms for advisory body members.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. You've seen this ordinance before, this is coming back for reintroduction, and again, just updates and changes the terms for all our appointed bodies, advisory bodies for the city council, bodies appointed by the city council. The only changes from the last time are to amend, fix a little issue with the ARMOX number of meetings, so that they can have two or more, they're not limited to just two meetings, and then also to clarify the qualifications to serve on the ARMOX committee, that you have to have a business in Solvang, not in the San Inez Valley. So those are the changes made, everything else is the same. I'm open for questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? This is, okay, I'll open it up to public comment. Does anybody have any comments? I know we've got a couple appointee people here, but if they have anything they want to add. If not, okay, close it to public comment. There's nobody on Zoom, is there? Okay. Bring it back here, and if there's no questions, I think this is what we requested last meeting, or the last time we discussed it, so is there a motion to approve this?
I think we just accept the first reading, is that right, Chelsea?
Yes, the motion would be to introduce the ordinance for first reading by title only. So you could say, I move to, I move to introduce first reading by title only, Ordinance Number 250384.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, seconded by Mr. Infante, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Claudia Rona?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our agenda, is there any closing comments by anyone here?
Happy to see the tree lights being put up, yeah, just before Yule Fest.
They're working hard on Yule Fest. One of the comments I'd like to make, if you have the opportunity to interact with a veteran tomorrow, please thank them for their service and their love and patriotism of our beautiful country.
Here, here.
Well said.
Well said. Thank you.
That being said, we're adjourned at 7:08. Thank you.